Well, good evening. I'm Mayor Protem Marian Edwards and I would like to call this session of the Temecula City Council to order. We will have our standard invocation this evening and it's going to be given by City Manager Aaron Adams. So if you please stand with me and then we'll be followed by the flag salute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Would you please bow your heads and pray with me? Dear me Father Lord, I give you thanks for this day. Give you thanks for the privilege of working and serving in the city of Temecula. This specific week, Lord, we lift up our veterans. We remember them. I want to just pray for continued health and safety of our active military and just gratefulness for for members of the military that have served in the past as we honor them tomorrow on Veterans Day. Lord, I also pray for our country and our county and our city and in the COVID challenges that are plaguing all of us, small business and residents alike, Lord, just continue to have your arms around each of us and providing relief. I pray for the city council and the city staff, Lord, just for wisdom and governing the city and in the business of tonight. And Lord, of course, they lift up our first responders and police and fire personnel and that are in harms way and protecting our community. Lord, just continue to keep them safe and protecting the great city of Temecula. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Aaron. So if you place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right? If you are standing, you may be seated. And Madam City Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Protem Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Nigar.
Here.
Councilmember Ron. Councilmember Ron.
I know he's here.
Here.
Unmuted.
Councilmember Schwank.
I'm here.
All right. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
On non-agendaized items? Wonderful, thank you. So do we have any city council reports? Anybody? Zach?
Yeah, thanks. Just, I'll just make one quick note. Last Tuesday, obviously, was our election and I made my way around the city and into the various polling locations. And I really just wanted to thank staff for the hard work that they've done on the election. So from our city clerk's office to TCSD to Public Works, it was really this team effort to pull this off. And I don't really want that to go unnoticed. I mean, I think I saw it and I know some of the residents that were voting saw it as well. And I just really wanted to highlight that tonight. A lot of work went into making that election day here in Temecula as seamless as possible. And for that, I just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you for doing that, Zach. I think it was so smooth and we have our, you know, city clerk and her great team to thank. She worked very closely with the county registrar. So not the same all over the country, but in Temecula, the election was very smooth. And I know we had a tremendous turnout. So thank you, everyone who voted. Anybody else, council members? No? Okay, then we're going to move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one. Wave reading of standard ordinance and resolutions. Number two, approve action minutes of October 27th. Number three, approve listed demands. Number four, adopt ordinance 2020-09 amending chapter 8.20 municipal code to include provisions regarding recyclables and organics collection. This is the second reading for that one. Number five, approve recommendation for community service funding program for fiscal year 2020-21 at the request of subcommittee members Mayor Protem Edwards and Councilmember Schwank. Okay, number six, adopt resolutions approving proposition 68 grant applications. Number seven, approve the First Amendment to the disposition and development agreement for Vine Creek Apartments, affordable housing development between the city of Temecula as a housing successor to the former Temecula Redevelopment Agency and Temecula Pacific Associates. Number eight, approve letter agreement for reimbursement to Western Riverside Council of Governments, WRCOG, for regional streetlight program from portion of LED rebate slash incentives. All right. So anybody want to pull anything? No, then I'll take a motion.
I move consent.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, motion and a second. And we're going to have a roll call vote in virtual space.
Yes, Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Nigar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ron.
Aye.
And Councilmember Schwank.
Aye.
All right. So I'm going to recess the city council meeting to the scheduled meetings of the Temecula Community Services District, successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency and the Temecula Housing Authority and/or the Temecula Public Financing Authority. Take it away, Zach Schwank.
Thank you very much. I'll call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, since we remain in this virtual setting, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Director Edwards.
I'm still here.
Director Nigar.
Here.
Director Ron.
Here.
And President Schwank.
And I'm here. Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and dispense with the reading of the rules and we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number nine, approve action minutes of October 27th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would you please take the roll call vote?
Yes. Director Edwards.
Aye.
Director Nigar.
Aye.
Director Ron.
Aye.
And President Schwank.
Aye. Thank you very much. That passes for zero. We'll go ahead and move on to a CSD business. Item number 10 is adopt the completed 2020 Community Services Master Plan. May we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, Mr. President, I believe our senior management analyst, Mike Wuden, will tee up tonight's long-awaited item. Mike, are you there?
I'm here, yes. Good evening, Mr. President and Board of Directors. As Kevin mentioned, my name is Mike Wuden, senior management analyst in the Community Services Department. So the city's original parks and rec master plan was completed in 1993. At that time, Temecula's population was approximately 32,000 and there were only five developed parks and seven undeveloped sites. The plan was projected out to the year 2013 with a focus mainly on planning, acquisition, and development of new parks. So during the budget workshop in May 2018, council approved funding and directed staff to conduct a new Community Services Master Plan as part of the fiscal year 1920 annual operating budget. Through a very competitive RFP process, RJM Design Group stood out from the other proponents and was selected as the consultant. And over the past year, TCSD, along with staff from multiple departments, has had the privilege of working with RJM Design Group on the completion of this master plan. There's already been support on some of the cultural and public art recommendations from the Arts and Culture Subcommittee, along with feedback and support from the Parks, Recreation and Community Services Subcommittee. And we are excited to have a summary of the entire report presented tonight. So with that, it's my pleasure to introduce Bob and Zach from RJM Design Group to go over the presentation.
Thanks, Mike. Excuse me. It's nice to see you're all healthy and happy. I hope you're happy. I'm certainly happy to be here. It's been a long time coming back with this report. And I think the only thing we can blame is COVID-19. So that's getting the blame for everything nowadays. I'm going to go through this presentation as efficiently as I can, along with my son Zach, who I don't know if you can see him, but he's sitting right here beside me. We're going to do a quick synopsis of the master plan document that was completed back in July. And I'll begin, basically, this presentation is going to be a summary of the Community Services Master Plan document. The purpose of the master plan document is to be a guide and implementation tool to help manage and develop parks, facilities, programs, and services for the city based upon local community needs. I'm going to go through five different categories here, different sections that roughly follow the five sections of the master plan document. I'll go through the inventory and much of the community engagement. Zach's going to go through the survey portion of the engagement and also the needs analysis. And then I'll finish up going through the recommendations, funding, and implementation. So the first section, in terms of inventory and existing resources, we look at the demographics of the community. There are two real critical areas we look at here because the, those, the population of youth, typically under age 14, are the biggest users of your parks, particularly the land area of your parks, because they're typically involved in league sports. So we look very carefully at that population. We also look at the senior population, because I am one, and also because they're also a unique subset of the community that happened to be involved significantly in your community services. You can see the chart there. It's a pretty reasonable cross-section, very similar to Riverside County. You can see in the dashed line above the top of those columns. Let me go to the next one there. So we looked at the inventory of all the facilities, visited all of the facilities. You have 41 parks, 300, over 320 acres of developed parkland, 12 unique facilities, and three pools, two of which are joint-use pools in the community. Just a few years ago, 2016, you did a Trails and Open Space Master Plan. We looked at that information, updated with any current information. Basically, you have almost 6,700 acres of open space, which includes the parks, 22 miles of trails, and 80 miles of bike lanes. We also looked at the inventory of all the programs you have in the community and you have significant diversity in terms of program offerings. And particularly now with COVID, I've been watching and looking at some of your community services meetings and all of the things that staff is doing to adapt to COVID, which is really phenomenal in my experience with other communities. But the city's wide diversity of programs has over 16, excuse me, 16 categories of different programs administered through six community services divisions through, as I mentioned, human services administration, recreation, special events, arts and culture. Next section I want to go through real quickly is our extensive community engagement. Many of you were part of that engagement. As we, let me go to the next page. There's really three different methodologies that we use, and that's color-coded on the right-hand side there. One-on-one and small group meetings and interviews, surveys, which were outreach to sports organizations as well as to the entire community. And that was an extensive outreach of over 20,000 residents. And then public workshops where we had them throughout the community, held throughout the community. So this outreach effort was really extensive, probably more so than any other master plan that I've prepared in my, I won't say how many years, but in my few years that I've been doing this, we had over 20,500 participants. So I'm going to go through a summary of some of that information. And I just want to point out that the first methodology here, one-on-one and small group, is covered by a number of slides. And you can see the yellow highlight there. Those are the items that were repeated in every one of the three methodologies we utilized. So they kept coming up again and again. This is from the one-on-one with council, commission, and administrators. We talked about programs and facility needs. The top program needs come up here as arts and cultural arts classes, biking, hiking, disadvantaged special needs programs and events, pickleball program, sand volleyball, and senior activities. And under the facility needs, all of the yellow ones again are repeated in all three different methodologies. Amphitheater, CRC, and MRC renovation, gymnasium, multi-use community center, preserve open space, senior center, and swimming pool and trails. The next category is again another stakeholder interview. This is with city staff. They had some very unique program ideas specific to them, such as expand the park ranger program, homeless outreach, teen programs. But they had several also of the facility needs that were repeated throughout our efforts. Connectivity of trails, expanding the senior center, large event space, and upgrading larger facilities. Arts and culture were also interviewed by our art consultant. And they had very unique program needs as well as facility needs. But consistent with all the groups was the art festivals. They also had, I think, a very good idea to collaborate with arts professionals in the community to establish an arts council, improve their branding and marketing, and their facility needs, unique needs were cultural arts center, increasing public art acquisition and display, and parking improvements in Old Town, which I think you're already working on. So we had a number of focus groups, I think five different focus groups, and each focus group was pretty well attended. We divided people up into small groups and they addressed both program and facility needs through extensive discussion. The program list here, I'm just going to hit the highlights here in the yellow, the fine arts classes, visual and performing arts classes, improving, expanding existing programs, leagues for emerging sports, programming for physically and mentally disabled and senior programs, and from a facility standpoint, the next amphitheater, aquatic recreation center, entertainment venue, additional senior center, multi-use community center. And with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Zach, who's going to go over some of the survey information we compiled.
As Bob mentioned earlier, this was a very extensive community outreach process. And one of the elements we did to make sure we were counting quite literally cleats on feet of all of the sports organizations and the players and the teams, we went out and interviewed 30 sports leagues throughout the community. And we quite literally counted the number of players, the size of their teams, the percentage of residents players, the facilities turnovers, and the seasonality of several of these sports. This was enabled us to create an accurate account of how many sports facilities you need in order to look at what you need today as well as in the future. And I'll go through some of these numbers very briefly later on the presentation. Before I do, I want to touch on the community survey itself. We had a multimodal outreach telephone survey to the entire community on June 18th through, I'm sorry, June 18th through July 22nd, 2019. It included over 1,200 households. Now, one of the things we look at is where that compares to the demographics, but more importantly, where that compares to the community geographics. And that's what we're showing here on the right-hand side. All the blue dots represent where we received information from across the community. And this is a great distribution. It shows that we didn't leave any areas off the map that didn't have any blue dots within them. Now, you might be saying, wait a minute, Zach, I see some areas down there on the bottom left-hand corner, which is largely open space. There's another corner right here, which is largely industrial. And then the upper right-hand corner, this is actually a new development coming forward. So all of the developed residential areas that we have throughout the city, we did have a great canvas, great distribution across the entire city. So we're very confident in the data that we've gotten back. I'd like to share just four charts of some of the information we received on it. There was a much larger process and analysis that we went through, and that's all available in the appendix, as well as every element that we heard through the cross-tabulations. But just to touch on some of those key points that Bob had mentioned, he highlighted here in the process and on these charts that we can see that were similar throughout all of the elements, all of our outreach elements, what I like to call a common thread, touched on everything a little bit. So when we asked the community what park open space improvements were desired, we heard a number of things, some of them very similar, as preserve the open space, provide more bike and walking trails. And you see those at the top of the chart in the highlighted elements. Those came up across all of our outreach modes. Of course, several other things were also reviewed as well throughout the entire process. But we've already highlighted for you just some of those core common elements. When we asked the community what facility or community center improvements were desired, we heard some of those top items and again are highlighted here is provide more outdoor indoor swimming pools, water parks, update facilities and community centers, improve class program schedule hours, provide more facilities and community centers, provide more activities, programs for disabled seniors, and provide more bike lanes. So you can start to see as we read through these highlighted elements, there's a common thread that we hear throughout all of these components. We also asked the community what library and museum performance venue improvements were desired. And you can see here, more performance centers, entertainment venues, provide more facilities in general, provide more cultural diversity in programs. Several other elements were listed as we went through them and you can see how they're ranked here. But again, we're just touching on some of those common elements that came up through all of the community outreach modes. And then the last chart I want to share as part of the multimodal outreach survey was we asked what recreation or cultural arts program classes were desired. And here we can see arts and crafting classes and senior classes and activities were some of the common elements that came up across all of them, including the survey, and they're also quite highly ranked here.
The third methodology that I'm going to give you a quick summary of was the community, part of the community engagement process, and actually it was a series of workshops held throughout the city. And we refer to these as prioritization workshops, where we shared all of the information we've just shared with you, with the participants, and many of you of which actually participated with us. I thank you for that. And again, we simply highlighted those things that just kept coming up again and again. So from a program need standpoint, art classes, visual and performing arts came up high repeatedly. Hiking came up repeatedly, improving, expanding existing programs, senior programs and activities, active senior programs and special needs, teen programs as well. So you can see also there's a, we're not forgetting any of the others. Everything is on the list and remains on the list. And you'll see in a moment how we evaluate this information. So if you go to the facility needs, the, again, the repetitive items that keep coming up again and again, aquatic center, swimming pool, multi-use community center, preserve open space, senior center, and trails. And this is, I'm going to turn this back to Zach. This is really setting up the needs analysis. And I'll let him give you a brief explanation of this.
What we do in order to kind of review everything all together is we compile everything into a spreadsheet, a very large massive matrix where we take everything we've heard, not just the highlighted components, but every single thing we've heard and where we heard it from. And we create a very large heat map and we put that into what we call needs analysis. Then we make this into a very graphical, easy-to-read chart. And I'd like to kind of walk through that process here very briefly. This is the middle part of the presentation and leads up to the recommendations where we'll conclude tonight, as well as with the funding and implementation sources. However, the needs analysis itself looked at how many sports organizations there are and how many sports facilities are needed. I had mentioned that earlier in the process. I want to dive a little bit into the numbers, very, very high level. A complete analysis is in the report. But we also looked at, are the parks appropriately distributed throughout the city? Is there an even distribution for all community members throughout the city? And then what are the top programs and facility needs? As we record everything through all of the modes we did, through the sports organizations, through the workshops, through the interviews, through the multimodal phone survey, what came to the top? And we did highlight some of those for you earlier tonight, but I want to walk through kind of a few of those elements here. Now, the sports organizations analysis, when we go through them, this is one example of soccer, particularly youth soccer. We look at the number of organizations, how many teams there are, the number of players, the facility size, how many turnovers there are, how many games they can play. And we break it down to a fairly simple equation of what you have versus what you need. And that compares the inventory into the demand. And from there, we get a surplus deficit. You are either meeting your needs or you are surpassing your needs or might be falling short in a couple areas. In fact, what we look at, the facility need ratio for youth soccer, we put a sort of fuel gauge together here on the right-hand side. You can see, based on the number of kids that are playing youth soccer, the number of teams, everything we've looked at throughout the analysis, you need 24 fields based on the players you have today in 2019. When we did the analysis, 2020 was very similar. And you can see here, your inventory was 24. So when we look at that inventory of 24 and the demand, 2019 demand of 29 facilities, we're a little shy. It doesn't mean we run out and build a bunch of facilities, but this helps us identify the direction of which we need to go, which is moving to meet some more of that demand. And when we project the demand based on all the information we've received and the demographics, we see that there is a continued growing demand for almost 34 fields in 2030. So this is something we'll want to look at specifically as Temecula evolves, making sure that we're meeting this demand, whether it's through scheduling, whether it's through lights, whether it's through facilities overlays and scheduling. So that way, we can really make sure that we're meeting the needs of those players and the organizations. So we did that for all the sports organizations. This is just an example of one. Something we look at specifically as we go through this, there are NRPA, what are commonly referred to as benchmarks or standards. Now, those are based on inventories throughout, through across the nation on what NRPA sees as far as other communities. Now, that range comes in from eight facilities demanded to 15 facilities. NRPA specifically says that each community should go out and evaluate their own standards through the methodology that we've applied here and find out exactly what you need. They publish these based on all the communities in, throughout the US that have provided them information. So it's a good benchmark if you have nothing. But it's really important when we look at your specific standards to meet the needs of your youth within your community. And you can see here at 29 facilities required, that's a big difference between the two that are identified here in the national standards. This really plays into making sure you're applying the adequate resources to the adequate organizations for what they're looking at. Another element that we look at is really the gap analysis. This talks about the distribution of parks and facilities. And this looks like, almost like an ink block chart across the community here. And we identify a five, 10, and 15-minute walk. Now, having little kids myself, it's more of a 15-minute walk for me to get to a park. And that's relatively about half a mile. And that's the analysis we look at. And you can see here on the left-hand side, quite a bit of the population is covered by a lot of these communities with access to parks. Again, you can see here, we've identified a few areas that are outside the sphere of influences of these parks. And you can see that, again, that's the high industrial area. There's an open space area down here on the bottom. We identified a couple of the areas in orange here in the center of the community. Those are very low residential communities that we see. Also, on the upper right-hand corner, there's the new development that's coming in to play up there. So we've identified some of those potential gap elements. But we also look at the more larger community park elements as well, which is more of an automobile-centric design. And that covers almost 99% of the entire area throughout the community itself. And then that leads us into some of the recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Zach. I'm going to go through this. There's actually three different categories that I'm going to talk about. Programming and service recommendations, park and facility recommendations, and then finally, maintenance recommendations. So if you could look through that, Zach. This is some of the analysis that Zach was getting to in terms of program and facility recommendations. So we looked at all those different categories. If you recall, I talked about the methodologies, the three methodologies on the bottom of the chart there, the blue and the yellow and the gold, basically being the one-on-one and small group input, the public workshops and the surveys. So those same colors appear across the chart on those bars. And if it showed up in all three of those methodologies, it's in the top category we call frequent. So there are frequent occurrences of those specific items. The second category down is apparent, and that's if it appeared in two of the different methodologies. And finally, at the bottom, we call those identified because they appeared in one of those methodologies. So I'm simply going to talk about the ones in the frequent, list those for you. And those are the ones, you can see with the red dots at the end, those are the ones that appeared not only in all three methodologies, but also multiple times in those methodologies because we had multiple tools within each one of them. So under the frequent category for program and services, we have arts and cultural arts classes, hiking, walking, biking, cycling, improve and expand on existing programs, senior programs, sports programs, and special needs classes and events. I won't take the time to go through all the rest. I'm sure you've all read the document and have it probably well memorized. So I won't spend a lot of time on it. But you can see here, we also took a look at those things that were similar in nature that might have been, people had used different words for, so that we categorized those together and came up with this frequency chart. And this gives us a good idea of those items that are important to a wide population in the community. And then this is the same kind of analysis we did for park facility recommendations. And you can see here, again, in the top category of frequent, that appeared in all three different methodologies. We have an aquatic center, entertainment venue, performing arts center, multi-use community center, new as opposed to a remodel, preserve open space, senior center and CRC renovations, and a new MRC, which is in the planning stages, and trails. So you can go on to the next one, Zach. And again, this is just a blow-up so you can read some of those areas. But again, the red dots and the numbers in them indicate how many times they came up. So that'll give you an idea of, again, the breadth of importance in the community. So the maintenance recommendations are broken up into general recommendations and specific. And just some of the general recommendations, and this comes from an analysis of a gentleman who's served in park and recreation in multiple states on the West Coast and some of the larger cities, such as Seattle, Los Angeles County, and some of the other jurisdictions. Seattle, Los Angeles County and some of the other jurisdictions on the west coast. But primarily to establish maintenance performance standards. You do have some, but this is to, to, to improve those. And by the way, these recommendations, you are already at a very high level. Of maintenance. The maintenance department does a fantastic job, but this is to. Fine tune that process they're using, hopefully reduce some of the costs for maintenance and make it even better. So the next one is establish a life cycle maintenance for buildings and park facilities and amenities. To expand sustainability efforts, develop an urban forestry management plan and promote the city's adopt a park program. These are specific recommendations and they have to do with three different areas within your parks. The first row has to do with landscape elements. And it has to do with soil testing and managing the soils in terms of frequency of irrigation, frequency of fertilization, that type of thing. Irrigation in terms of monitoring your irrigation system, parks, tree, park trees and landscaping and turf reduction. A lot of. Jurisdictions have a lot of turf in their parks that are underutilized and turf requires a lot of water. Water requires a lot of irrigation. Irrigation requires a lot of maintenance. So as does turf. So we look at reducing that by putting in more native. Planting areas. And then facilities is the second row. These have to do a lot with health, safety and welfare. And these are important things to come to the surface. Anything on the playgrounds that might be damaged or in need of repair needs to be maintained regularly and replaced if necessary. Some of the synthetic field surfaces, sports courts, lighting. And then the final row, there's park and roadway areas and sidewalks and walkways. And the final section of our presentation tonight, I'm sure you've all read this very carefully. Is funding and implementation. And we had just finished this all up very nicely. And then. Somebody started throwing the word COVID around. So we had to go back and kind of reevaluate portions of this and with the input from the city. Try and update as best we could or guesstimate as best we could. But I want to talk briefly about funding sources for parks and recreation as well as current and projected capital project costs. So the funding sources, you're all very familiar with the general fund, community facilities districts and landscape maintenance districts and measure C, which you specifically have. Somewhat limited in that it has not allowed for any updating in terms of the costs on an annualized basis. And it goes back to. The last century, actually, as your previous park and recreation master plan goes back to. Developer rated related fees, state, federal and private grants. And then of course, the sales tax measure S. And then going down the list, public, private partnerships, nonprofits, corporate sponsorships and bonds, user group contributions. And last but not least, and hopefully something you don't have to do is sale or lease of any surplus land. This gets into some of the recommendations of both current projects that you've been working towards as well as. Projected capital project costs for additional projects. And if you see the, the pie chart on the left, I'll go through that fairly quickly, but the total budget that we've. Allocated to these is over about $120 million over the next 15 to 20 year period. And I'll just go through, starting with the blue category, it's about $18.7 million worth of park specific renovations. In existing developed parkland. The next one is about 21.3 million in, again, facility specific renovations to existing. Facilities. And the one you can't see there, but it's actually there is less than 1%. It's 150,000 of specific renovations for joint use school sites. And the big, the big portion of the pie here is about $80 million in new facilities and new park projects. So this is a timeline and we, we basically stole this from your 30 year timeline. One of our consultants had worked on. Our economist and he was very happy to share it with us. So I'm going to go through this in five, roughly five to 10 year increments. The further you go out, the less clear the crystal ball is, but we're going to. Go through this section at a time, if you can go to the next one, Zach. So this first time period from, we're saying 2020 to 2025, we were hedging a little bit going to 2030. Having no idea of what may happen with COVID or how long it may take us to get back onto a, a normal track again. But we have categorized here and there's no difference between what's above the bar, what's below the bar. What we've identified here are some of the projects you actually have going on now or soon to be going on. Senior center renovation, a new margarita recreation center, which may be renamed, I understand. A new dog park, renovation at playgrounds at the CRC, which has been ongoing for a while. Sport court and sports field renovations are some, as well as landscaping and site improvements. As I said earlier, the things that are the most important on this, these first increment, incremental years are health, safety and welfare. Issues that are important to take care of on a timely basis. The second period, 2025 to 2030, or again, hedging a little bit to 2035. And this has to do with a number of projects which you've been in planning or in budget procedures. That includes picnic shelters, trail improvements in different areas of the community, pickleball courts, many of which you've already begun. Park restroom improvements, pool repairs at Chaparral High School. Renovation of the theater seating at the Old Town Temecula Community Theater. As well as renovation at the Temecula Valley Museum and a new Main Street courtyard. And then the final, these are really some new recommendations that have come up and we've talked about. From 2030 perhaps to 35 or 40. So there were, we hedge every five years. But this is about an $80 million effort. And the, the importance of this now is to start now to plan ahead. For whatever potential funding is available or grants might become available for these. So these are, are important projects. For the city and it's important to be aware of them and keep, keep them in your, on your radar. Southside Rec Center, Veterans Park Expansion, a replacement for the Jefferson Recreation Center, which will. Have to be replaced when the freeway ramps go in. City Hall pop-up event park, which is, I think you're now working on some parking in that area. Old Town Gymnasium, a new sports park up at Marietta Creek. And multicultural arts and community center. So those are some of the big ticket items. The last thing I want to go through here was not on my agenda until we decided we'd better talk about this a little bit more. And it, it is extremely important. One of the things that this has done is made us look long and hard at many of our partner master plans and talking to. Many of our clients that we're currently working with and that we have worked with in the past that this is a game changer. So COVID has had a human cost that is just unbelievable throughout the world. The government agencies and cities have had to redirect financial resources to battle the virus. And at the same time, revenues are going down. And so it's a, it's a tough situation, but it is very critical. Time for community services because they're only going to become a more important resource than ever before. People are suffering, people want to get outside. I know I want to get outside, but my wife won't let me. No, that's another story. Community services have a positive impact on people every day and cutting budgets now. And deprive people of important community resources such as open space and exercise and getting back to nature. A unique aspect of some of the research we did is that California's local park recreations. Agencies statewide generated $16 billion of economic activity. The most of any state in the union. So it's pretty significant because we have wonderful weather, we have wonderful recreation opportunities. So. Those local agencies contribute significantly and don't, I think it's important to remember that to the economy. You can go. Oh, you're on the list. Okay. Community services offerings aren't just nice to have. Amenities, they really are gotta have because park and recreation transforms the cities into vibrant and prosperous communities throughout the state. Temecula is, has excellent programs and services, a very experienced and talented staff. Who always go the extra mile. And I don't say that simply because I like them, but they, you have an excellent, excellent department and excellent staff and leadership. So I think it's important today. To keep that in mind because their challenges are greater than ever. That's the conclusion of our presentation. We'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
I'd like to take just one more, just a couple of seconds though, Bob, and, and mention something that also was a development as part of the document. What we've prepared and delivered to the community is a roadmap essentially for the future to help us plan and guide the development of parks and recreation. And what we found, but as Bob mentioned earlier, is there are some unknowns that could come up out of nowhere. And be a game changer such as COVID. It was a dramatic change. We have seen in other, other clients of ours where. Communities have exploded and all of a sudden they've doubled over a few years because of tremendous development and increase in population sizes. What we've done and built into this document, which isn't readily available on a slide or title screen, but more importantly, it's in the systems. Of preparation for the community analysis, the community outreach and how it's updated. What we've developed into this document is a toolkit. So as. Unforeseen things come up, COVID, financial development or economic influences that might be unforeseen and. And do change the characteristic of the community. This document is prepared to be modified almost as a living document as you go forward. So it's not a. 10, 15 year change, but it can be a progressive element throughout all of the individual sections. Based on the change in needs of the community. So that way it's dramatically more cost effective and, and editable and updatable. As a document itself as you move forward. And that really, I think is one of the stronger points too, within everything we've prepared is now you can continue to use this document. On an annual basis and, and it can grow with your community based on any potential unforeseen elements as we move forward here into the future. With that, thank you very much. I hope we didn't take too long. But as Bob had mentioned, we can take any questions that you might have.
I have one.
Great. Thank you for the, the report, Bob and Zach. Mary Ann, yeah, go ahead.
You know, we saw several times hiking mentioned about people wanted additional hiking. Can you define what hiking is? Because when I think of hiking, I think of non. Improved trails, not like our, you know, bike paths and those kinds of things. And I envision, you know, it can be mountainous. It can be. Large areas of open space with maybe, you know, pathways and things. But can you define what do people, what do people generally think of when they think of hiking?
You know, that's a very good question. Thank you for offering that. We try not to interpret what people say or what they put down in either their survey or their questionnaires. What we try and do is evaluate what you have and what they're doing currently compared to what they're talking about. Now. There is a, a master plan for trails in your community that we have looked at very carefully. And we've built on that slightly. In the document, in terms of making sure that there's. Access for pedestrians to walk on safe routes to schools to be able to, to circulate from their neighborhoods. To nearby parks without having to cross too many streets. So when we interpret, we do an interpretation of all of the different terminology. And look at it from a more pragmatic standpoint. Obviously, we're not going to transport anybody up into the Sierras for hiking. That is one thought, but I don't think any of them were thinking you were going to be able to provide that. There is the potential for linking regional trails along Marietta Creek to the ocean even. So. We've got a regional trail network that we've looked at in the master plan document.
And would they consider that hiking, do you think? I mean, it's an improved, you know.
In the context of all of the, the work that we were doing, we, we told them this is for the city of Temecula, in the city of Temecula. So I don't think, I don't think anybody was going too far afield.
Okay, that was exactly what I wondered. If they thought you're going to somehow have access to, you know, mountainous trails or something. Okay.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Any other questions from council? Matt? No? Okay, I have no questions. Bob and Zach, thank you very much. Appreciate the, the staff report. Do we have any public comments tonight?
Mr. President, we do not.
Okay. Then if I may, Mr. President, just make a, a quick comment.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Yeah, just a real quick one. Hey, Bob and Zach, I wish you would have been more thorough.
I'm sorry.
You know what? I just wanted to say this took a while to do, but geez, based on. The comprehensiveness of what you've done, it was well worth the wait. And man, you've given us a document that is going to be so useful. Geez, for the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. So.
Yeah, thank you. I, my only cautionary tale is don't wait for the next century to update it. Will, I, I don't think I'll be around. Zach might not even be around.
I will be.
We may make a motion to move that $80 million in the, uh, uh, parks and rec here, maybe in the next meeting. Okay?
I like that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Matt, any comments from you tonight?
No, no, just, you know, I've, I've gotten the preview of this. Already and just appreciate all the hard work that, that went into this. And it certainly echoes a lot of the same conversations and things we are hearing from the. Community members that we're close to. So really do appreciate all the work you put into this and it's a great roadmap to help us. With our future endeavors. So thanks so much.
Thanks, Matt. All right. Anything, Mary Ann, any comments?
It's, it is incredible, the, the level of detail that was included. You know, I don't think we've ever had anything that was that detailed and specific. And I also. Appreciate the map that showed the contact, you know, the, the responses that you got. And I think it's. Very gratifying to see our residents participate, you know, to that extent and at that level. And. It was apparent by the, the map. So thank you. It's just amazing. Excellent.
Thank you. And I'll certainly concur and wrap this up. And the, the outreach was, was really good. I mean, I attended a few of those events and. Really just to see the community engaged was really nice. So that's good. And then, you know, it's been said a couple of times, this is that roadmap for our community and. And we're realizing how important community services is for the happiness and the wellbeing and the health of our community. So. To see this plan implemented over the next few years is going to be exciting time. So. Thank you for that. And then thanks for staff, all the hard work put in on, on the, the house side of this. I really appreciate that as well. So. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
All right. We have a motion in a second?
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Director Nigar?
Aye.
Director Ron?
Aye.
President Schwenk?
Aye. Thank you very much. That passes for O. Bob and Zach, have a good evening. Thank you so much. Thank you all. All right. Director Hawkins, we have a director's report this evening.
It's tough to follow that. You know, the only thing I would add, you know, what we heard in addition to the quality of our programs and maintenance and amenities. We heard about the quality of our professionalism and that's been independently validated. So that was good to hear and something that I think we've all known. So. So that's a good feeling. We appreciate that. I know Commissioner, or excuse me, Commission Chair Levine will cover some good stuff tonight, but also, and Aaron mentioned this earlier, but just a simple thanks in advance. To our veterans, past and present, for your sacrifice and service. God bless you all. Send in my report.
Thank you so much, Director Hawkins. Do you have a general managers report this evening?
Mr. President, just, just a couple of quick things related to that last presentation I wanted to mention. Appreciate Kevin's team, Bob's team and, and everything that came together over the last couple of years. If you recall. I think we were in a budget workshop two years ago when we sort of hit pause on some. Capital projects. And I think maybe it was Councilman Ron or, you know, one of you that sort of said, you know. 1992 was a long time ago. We really need to dust off this, this plan. And so that was really the impetus for, for doing what we just did. And so I'm. I'm grateful for the support of the council for, for getting us to today. But this document, as was mentioned, is going to be an incredibly valuable. Guideline every spring when we sort of sit down and we crunch numbers and we. Reprioritize capital projects as things change, as council members change, as the community priorities change. This document will be so very helpful in terms of what we're doing. And the other thing that I saw. In, in the presentation are some things that we started many years ago that I just wanted to remind in the public to is. Back in 2016, when measure S passed, we set, the city council set a series of fiscal guidelines associated with that. One of which was asset management, investment, which is what Bob was talking about where we pay ourselves. where we pay ourselves to upkeep, you know, facilities and programs and services and stuff. And so we've been doing that for four years and hopefully, you know, will continue for the next 20, 25 years. But that asset management program is integral to the cultural arts and sort of the community services plan. So I just wanted to bring that. And then new sports parks that are coming online, you know, those are right around the corner. We got Somers Bend that is, if you've been out there, that's coming online. Tonight, on tonight's agenda, you approved a grant application for $8 million. If we're successful in that, we'll be adding more, the 24 soccer fields that were deficient in, in 10 years, we'd be adding in one fell swoop if we're successful at that $8 million at the detention basin property. So a lot of exciting park and rec things and appreciate, President. So thanks for letting me add that.
Thank you, Sarah. Any board of directors' reports this evening? All right. All right. Seeing that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting, November 24th. We are adjourned.
All right, I am going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting and we're going to move into a public hearing. So I will read the instructions. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before or during a public hearing in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects in the manner prescribed. Important notice at the top of this agenda. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk prior to the public hearing. This is item number 11. Approved fiscal year 2019-20 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and substantial amendments to the 2012-13 and 2020-21 CDBG Annual Action Plans. Could we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Okay, can we see that? Okay.
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor Potem Edwards and members of the council. Tonight, we have an action-packed CDBG agenda. I am here to present three different items related to CDBG, the 2019-20 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Reports, or the CAPER, and also the adoption of substantial amendments related to additional CDBG CV funding and the reallocation of funds from the Sam Hicks Park Playground project to a new project. So first up is the CAPER. And well, what is the purpose of the CAPER? It summarizes CDBG accomplishments for 2019-20. It assesses progress towards completing activities in the action plan, the consolidated plan, and the assessment of fair housing. It also gives HUD an update on our expenditure of CDBG funds. And it also gives the community an opportunity to comment on our CDBG activities. So the great news is that I have a lot of great news. We have accomplished a lot in the CDBG program over the past year. In 2019-20, CDBG funded nine unique service providers. In conjunction with the Fair Housing Council of Riverside County, we provided fair housing services by assisting 496 clients, including 490 landlord tenant mediation services and processing six anti-discrimination complaints. We completed the construction of the replacement of the boardwalks in Old Town. We provided 45 underserved youth with new clothing and school supplies through the Assistance League. We completed four housing rehab projects through the Habitat for Humanity Critical Home Maintenance and Repair Improvement Program for a total of 31 housing units over the life of the program. We served 56 persons experiencing homelessness or those at risk of homelessness through the city's homeless prevention and diversion program. We provided before and after-school care for eight children through the Boys and Girls Club. We provided 56 persons experiencing homelessness or underserved individuals with emergency food through the VNW Circle of Care Program. We assisted 80 domestic violence victims through SAFE. We provided hospice care through Hospice of the Valleys for 33 elderly persons. We provided one specially-trained service dog through canine support teams. We provided direct advocacy for five foster children through Voices for Children. And we assisted 219 individuals at risk of homelessness with case management through Community Mission of Hope. So there are a lot of really great organizations in our community doing great things, and we appreciate their continued partnership, especially with this small additional hurdle of a pandemic that everyone has to deal with. So that wraps up the CAPER portion of the presentation. The second item for council to consider this evening is a substantial amendment to the 2020-21 Annual Action Plan for the additional allocation of CDBG CV funds. So what signifies a substantial amendment? According to our CDBG Citizen Participation Plan, a substantial amendment is required when a substantial change is proposed to an action plan, which includes increasing the budget of an activity by $50,000 or more, increasing the budget of an activity by 25% or more of the original budget. There is a significant change in the purpose, scope, or beneficiaries of an activity, or the city proposes to add or delete an activity. In our case, the city is adding activities to the 2020-21 action plans because we got additional CDBG CV funding. So on March 27th, 2020, the Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, or the CARES Act, was signed into law. The CARES Act distributed an additional allocation of CDBG funds, known as CDBG CV, to entitlement jurisdictions, which is us, for the prevention and response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The city received its first allocation of about $329,000 of CDBG CV funds in April 2020. In September 2020, staff received an unexpected notification from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, that the city would receive an additional $864,000 in CDBG CV funds.
Woo-hoo.
Yeah. On June 9th, the city council adopted a substantial amendment to the 2021 Annual Action Plan for the creation of Temecula Assist, utilizing the entire $329,000 of the first CDBG CV allocation, plus an additional $171,000 from the general fund. Tonight, the city council is being asked to make recommendations for the second allocation of CDBG CV funds. So what are some requirements and considerations for this source of funding? HUD released the requirements on August 10th, 2020, so after we already had implemented our first program. All of our CDBG CV activities must meet one of three CDBG national objectives. Benefit to low and moderate-income persons, addressing an urgent need, or preventing or eliminating slump or blight. In our case, our activities typically benefit low and moderate-income persons. The Federal Register notice also released, it also included alternative requirements and flexibilities for the allocation, including expedited citizen participation requirements, eligible costs from January 2020 forward, which is nice. We must prevent the duplication of benefits. Up to 20% is allowed for administration. There is no public services cap where typically it's at 15%. And most crucially, there must demonstrate a tie to COVID-19. So all activities must be used to prevent, prepare for, or respond to COVID-19. This can be accomplished through the direct expenditures related to costs associated with prevention or response, you know, such as PTE, et cetera, or indirectly such as addressing housing markets or business disruptions. As I mentioned, the city is responsible for implementing policies and procedures to prevent beneficiaries from receiving duplicative benefits from different federal and non-federal sources. A duplication of benefits occurs when a person, household, business, or government, or other entity receives financial assistance from multiple sources for the same purpose, and the total assistance received for that purpose is more than its total need. So practically, CDBG CV funds cannot be used to pay for eligible costs that have already been paid for or will be paid for by another federal program or other sources. If this occurs, the city and/or the grantee must repay the grant, which obviously we don't want. As I mentioned, on June 9th, 2020, the city council approved a $500,000 small business grant program called Temecula Assist. It was primarily funded with CDBG CV funding, and it provided direct relief to business owners with two different grant opportunities, one funded with CDBG and then the other one funded with the general fund. So the goal of Temecula Assist was to assist business owners in operations during this global pandemic and also to create economic opportunities by creating and retaining jobs held by low or moderate-income individuals. I just wanted to go through the status of Temecula Assist, which is up on the screen right now. So on the middle column, which is the business improvement side, we had $170,000. And those were $5,000 grants, and that was through the general fund. So for that one, we had 89 that applied. 34 of them have been approved and 34 have been fully executed and funded. So we are completely done with that portion of the program. We have paid out $170,000 for that side of the program. And there were seven that were deemed ineligible on that side, and also there's still 48 on the waiting list. For the CDBG CV side, so the job retention side, those were $10,000 grants, and we had $330,000 for those grants. We had 144 businesses apply. We have 29 businesses that have been approved. And we have 27 agreements that are fully executed and 26 that have been funded. So we have paid a total of $260,000 to our small businesses. We have four businesses that still need additional documentation, and that will wrap up that portion of the grant as well. So we're actually one of the first communities to spend down our CDBG CV funding. So great job by everyone for acting so quickly on that one. So getting back to generally, CDBG CV funds, there are four main types of activities that are eligible. Business assistance, housing assistance, public services, and public facilities. This chart includes some sample activities and then key considerations for council for each activity type. So I'll go through them quickly. For business assistance, an example of that would be an expansion of Temecula Assist. Some things to consider, we can only expand the job retention side of the program, the more complicated side. We must target low or moderate business owners. And then something to consider, the need might be being filled, seems to be being filled by other federal programs. On housing assistance, some sample programs, some sample activities would include mortgage assistance, rental assistance, or utility assistance. Some things to think about here. We can include payments in arrears, so if someone is behind on rent. It can include up to six months of payments. Payments would go directly to the landlord or the mortgage company or the utility company to make sure that that money is going where it needs to go. Again, we must target low and moderate-income residents. And we can set up the framework similarly to what we currently have in the Homeless Prevention and Diversion Program. For public services, some sample activities there include homeless services, food assistance, broadband access, health services, and job training. Again, assistance is targeted to low and moderate-income residents. And then finally, with public facilities, that can include facility updates to enable social distancing. What makes it a little bit difficult to fund public facilities with this source of funding, it must have a COVID-19 tie, of course, but it still has to fulfill environmental requirements and labor compliance requirements. So that could be a little tedious. So we met, staff met with the finance committee to discuss our recommendations for the additional CDBG CV allocation. And after discussing the possible programs and activities, the finance committee made the following recommendations, which I am presenting to you for your consideration this evening. So the first activity is an emergency rental assistance program and the amount of $500,000. The second proposed activity is an emergency mortgage assistance program at $264,000. The third is an expansion of our homeless services and homeless prevention at $55,000. And then administration, a little bit of administration for our consulting services only for $45,000. And that would include really helping staff come up and create the guidelines and the parameters for the new programs. So one more thing before we go and discuss the recommendations for that funding. We do have one more item to discuss, and that is a substantial amendment related to the reallocation of Sam Hicks Monument Park playground funds. So just a little bit of background here. As you likely recall, we had a purchase and installation agreement with Nature Works for a new playground at Sam Hicks Monument Park. And there was a breach of contract by the contractor, which resulted in no park, no playground. Because we spent approximately $412,000 on the playground, but we didn't have one, HUD requested that we repay this $412,000. I put that in quotes because the funds, that $412,000 can actually be used on another CDBG-eligible project. On May 26, 2020, council authorized the repayment to HUD. And staff recommends that the funds be reallocated to the rehabilitation of the Mary Phillips Senior Center. And by doing this, this causes or leads to substantial amendment to the 2012-13 and the 2020-21 action plans. So with that being said, staff recommends that city council adopt three different resolutions. The first one is to approve the CAPER. The second one is to approve the substantial amendment related to CDBG CV funding and then the associated funding recommendations. And then the third one is to approve the substantial amendments related to the reallocation of Sam Hicks funding to the senior center rehab. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions you may have.
All right. So are there any questions? I actually have a question, Lynn.
Of course.
We know what low to moderate residents are, individuals. What is low to moderate business?
It would be owned by a low or moderate-income individual. In the case of Temecula Assist, just to give you an example, the business had to prove the creation or the retention of a lower moderate-income job. So we had some documentation, like if it was a restaurant, if it was like the line cook, for example, they would show documentation that they met those income requirements.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. So nobody has any questions? All right then. This is a public hearing, so I am going to open the public hearing. And are there any comments? I'm looking at an empty room, obviously. So Madam City Clerk, have you received anything?
Mayor Potem Edwards, we have received zero public comments on this item.
All right. In that case, we can close the public hearing and the item is open for discussion if any discussion is needed. Say again, Mike?
Move all three resolutions.
Okay.
Let's not compare.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to move all three resolutions. Peter, how do you, we're doing them all together, correct?
You can do them all in one motion and I do not need to read anything.
Okay, that was my next question. All right then. So can we have the roll call for the vote?
Yes. Mayor Potem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
Good. Okay, then we can move on to the.
Madam Mayor Potem, just to short.
Oh, I know what you're going to say, Luke. Yes, and thanks for reminding me. Yes.
Yes. Just some quick comments.
I vote no on the next item that you're about to.
I'm sure, I'm sure you will. But I do have some bittersweet news to share with everyone, and I know many of you already know. But Lynn is, after tonight, is going to be off on a new adventure in her career. And actually, the presentation you just saw was her last official act as an employee for the city of Temecula. So eight years we've been working together. Lynn came, it was the fall of 2012, when she first started. So we've had a long journey. We've done a lot of really good things. Lynn has been involved in just about every single thing possible, not only in community development, but many other endeavors of the city. It's going to be a major hole for us to fill, probably never, can be totally filled. But Lynn, it has been a great run. I really appreciate you. On behalf of the whole community development department, we wish you luck. I'm very honored to be able to have called you a colleague and also a friend. So good luck in your future endeavors, and you know where to find us if you want to come back. So good luck in your future endeavors, and you know where to find us if you want to come back.
I already said I voted no, but apparently, you know, it didn't do me good. How exciting for you, though.
Thank you.
It is wonderful, and I can say since two thousand and twelve, Luke has never looked better.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, may I?
Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, Lynn, boy, Luke said it so very well. But I too just wanted to thank you for your service to the city of Temecula, and wish you nothing but success in the next, next chapter. But you have, you have done amazing work in community development. You've managed programs like this, the community just saw impeccably managed, and we're better off because of the work that you did. So thank you, Lynn, for your service.
Yeah, incredible. Thank you for everything, and you've been a quiet, tremendous resource. And again, I said Luke has never looked better since two thousand and twelve. So council members, anything?
If I may, a quick, quick comment. Lynn, I have to echo everything everybody's been saying. You know, it's not like you're in front of the city council, you know, every meeting. But what the public doesn't see is all of our subcommittee meetings, and, and how you and the rest of staff get us prepared so that when we hear something like this, it's complete, there's a ribbon on it. And really, the testimony to it is we just don't get that many inquiries about it because your work and our work in the background is just so thorough. The public will never really see that, but that's what stands out the most for me, how you've prepared me and my colleagues over the years. So thank you.
Thank you. Yep, Zach?
Yeah, thank you, Mary Ann. Lynn, gosh, you're certainly gonna be missed. And, you know, I've only been here for, going on a couple of years on the council level, but just as a resident, I've watched you and the presentations you've given over the years. And, and you can certainly tell that your heart and soul is in what you do. And you look at these programs, how they genuinely impact our residents. And so it's, it's good, powerful work. I'm kind of taken aback here, like Lynn's leaving us. Hold on a second. Mary Ann, you said no, I say no. One more, and then you can't go. But, but in all seriousness, you're gonna be very missed in our city, and I wish you the best in, in everything that's ahead of you, which I know is, you're gonna be wonderful, so.
Yeah, so Matt, want to add anything?
Yeah, just, just, you know, it's been an absolute pleasure working with you, Lynn. Your professionalism, I think your integrity, just, you know, everything you've brought to the table makes Temecula what it is. And you're an important part of our team, and, and you're gonna be missed. If, if we could vote on it, it would be a no for me, too. You know, but we don't get that option. But, but stay in touch and let us know how you're doing, yeah.
I will. Thank you so much, and I'm gonna stay here in town for now, so.
That's what I was gonna say, to make the blow a little less severe, you know, at least she's gonna be here, and you can always come back to the parties. Like we have a lot of parties, but yeah, you've just been tremendous. So Luke, final, final comments?
No, I think everybody said it, said it well. Lynn's gonna be missed, and she, you know, she has that, that special characteristic that characterizes so many great city employees over, over the years, and that, that she really does care about what she, what she does and who she's doing it for. It showed up in the work, so appreciate it.
And in the presentation of the work, always. So thank you for everything.
Thank you all for everything. It's been, it's been a journey, and I'm gonna take everything that I've learned here, which is so much beyond measure, and I'm going to get to actually apply it to communities all over the state now. So I'm really excited to take that opportunity.
Once a family member, always a family member. So, you know, anytime, we'd love to see you.
Awesome, of course. Thank you so much.
All right, so now we can move on, and thank you, Luke, for reminding me. Now we can move on. I think I was in denial, that was what it was. We'll move on to business item number twelve. Consider implementation of campaign contribution limits established by new state legislation and repeal of city campaign disclosure requirements now covered by state law. So can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. AB five seventy-one was adopted in two thousand nineteen. This legislation establishes a campaign contribution limit for elective city offices that will become effective on January one, two thousand one. This new law provides that a person may not make, and a candidate may not accept campaign contributions from that person that total four thousand seven hundred dollars for each election. And now that campaign limit is the same limit that applies to candidates for the state assembly and the state senate. It does not apply to contributions by the candidate to his or her own campaign, and it also does not apply to independent expenditures. That campaign limit adjusts, is adjusted every two years by the Fair Political Practices Commission. And while it's at forty-seven hundred dollars for two thousand nineteen to twenty, on November the nineteenth of two thousand twenty, the FPPC has an agenda item in which their staff is recommending that that be increased to four thousand nine hundred dollars per year. And that would be effective for the two thousand twenty to twenty-one, or I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two. And that's forty-nine hundred dollars for each candidate per election. Now, the legislation also provides that the city has the authority to adopt its own campaign contribution limit that may be higher or lower than the state-established limit. Now, on January the first of two thousand twenty-one, there will be a campaign contribution limit in the city of Temecula. It will either be the state-established campaign contribution limit, or it will be one that you adopt on your own. If the city adopts its own campaign contribution limit, the city must enforce that limit on its own. The FPPC will enforce the state-established limit, but the FPPC will not enforce a city-established limit. And so that is, enforcement is always difficult, it's usually expensive. So in, in looking at this, that's one factor to take into account. At this time, we wanted to present this to you so you can discuss whether you wish to stay with the state limit or you wish to establish that your own. If you are comfortable with the state limit, then there is no action that needs to be taken. It will just automatically go into effect on January one, two thousand twenty-one. If you would like to adopt your own limit, we've prepared an ordinance to that effect, and you'll just have to decide what you think that appropriate limit would be. Now, the second part of this report is, since we're dealing with campaign contributions and disclosures, we are also recommending that you repeal existing chapter two point one zero of the Temecula Municipal Code that provides for additional, or provides for certain campaign disclosures. This ordinance was adopted in two thousand eight, and it was designed at that time to catch a lot of the late campaign contributions that came in and required prior to the election and required disclosure. Since that time, however, the Fair Political Practices Commission and the legislature has adopted additional disclosure requirements that really cover exactly what the council put into place in two thousand eight. So for the last few years, this has really been superseded by state law. City has not had to enforce it, has not had to apply it. And so at this point in time, we're recommending that you repeal it just to avoid confusion between the state limits and the, and disclosure requirements and the city disclosure requirements. So as I say, you'll need to consider the campaign contribution limit, and then regardless of what you handle, what you decide how to proceed there, we're also recommending that you repeal chapter two point one oh. So at this point in time, both the city clerk and I will be pleased to answer any questions that you may have on this matter.
Any questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, quick one, Peter. The state limits, that applies across the board to every elected office in the state of California?
No, it applies, there's, there's a different campaign contribution limit for different state offices. So the forty-seven hundred dollars that's in effect now applies to candidates for state assembly, state senate, and on January the first of two thousand twenty-one will apply to candidates for elective office in cities and counties. There's a different limit for the governor, and a different limit for the other statewide officers that are elected.
Got it. So let's take county supervisor, for example. The county, like us, can determine to not do the forty-seven hundred and make it ten thousand. Is that a fair statement?
That's true. In fact, I think their recommendation is for twenty thousand dollars as a, as a limit on contributions.
Okay, all right, thank you. No more questions?
Sure.
Anybody else? Okay, Randy, do we have any public comments on this one?
We do not.
We do not, so we can have a discussion. Mike?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm okay personally with the forty-seven and the state limits. I asked the question about the county supervisor races because the last one started getting up into the six, seven hundred thousand dollar range. And I mean, at some point, in all honesty, you know, that just makes it prohibitive for people to run unless you're uber-connected, and, and I think that starts to disconnect people from the community, not, not keep them close to the community. But I'm open if the council wanted to do something else, but I think the forty-seven hundred per year works.
I do have a comment. Does anybody else have a comment? I think the thing that, that convinces me that we need to support the state limits is that if we were to take this on ourselves, the city clerk's office would have to track every contribution, you know, and authenticate those, and, and keep track of every, in every campaign of every person running, and then retain those records forever, I think. I can just imagine, and then if, if there's a dispute, we'd have to go to court to settle the dispute. I'm going to support adopting the, the state limit just to avoid having to do all of the legwork and the enforcement piece. It's just, I think it would be prohibitive, and it would certainly tie up the city clerk's office, for many, many hours in perpetuity. So if there are no further comments, I can, I can accept a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, I think you have a few more comments there.
Oh, would you? Oh, I'm sorry, you guys, way bigger. Zach, go ahead.
So thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Yeah, I think when you look at some of the money that starts flowing into races and cities, and I think it makes a whole lot of sense to, to adopt that, that state amount, and really for that enforcement side of it. So I would be fully in support of, of going with that, that recommendation, this state recommendation.
Matt, is the loan holdout?
Yeah, no, let's make it a million dollars. No, I mean, the state dollar amounts are fine. I think, you know, we're all okay with that. I'm always in favor of voting on things that actually complicate the city clerk's office and make her do more work. But in this case...
He's laughing, so you're in good shape.
Okay, just moving on. So, you know, that's it. Let's, let's do this thing.
I think, yeah.
At forty-seven hundred, and then do we have to, what's the action for repealing? Can we make one motion?
Yes, the, given the comments that were made, there will be no ordinance to impose a separate city limit. So you really don't have to take any action on that. So the only action, if you're supportive of repealing the additional disclosures, is to adopt an ordinance, and if you're ready, I'll read the title for that.
That's my motion.
Okay, this would be an ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula repealing chapter two point one oh of the Temecula Municipal Code relating to campaign disclosure requirements.
All right, and I need a second, too.
Second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk is breathing a sigh of relief, and she can call the roll.
Yes, thank you very much, council members. Mayor Pro Tem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
Now you can breathe that sigh of relief, okay. Thank you, gentlemen. So item number thirteen. Approve recommendation to rename existing Margarita Community Park as Michael, in parentheses or quotes, Mike Nigar Community Park, and name the future public pool within the park as Liam's Place at the request of Councilmember Matt Ron. So...
Mayor Pro Tem, if, well, yeah, I'm definitely going to leave the virtual meeting. To say that my family was honored that Councilmember Ron brought this forward, and that the council's even considering this, to say honored is really an understatement. We, we really haven't thought or let it sunk in because it's a bit overwhelming. I will tell you that when I told my son, he started getting excited and flapping his hands and jumping up and down. And, you know, I had to tell him, well, you know, wait till after Tuesday, okay, just in case. But I just wanted, anticipating something, I appreciate your deliberations, and I'm gonna bug out for the remainder of the meeting.
All right, have a good evening.
Take care and thank you.
Bye. All right, in that case, can we have a staff report, please?
Mayor Pro Tem and city council. I'm Betsy Lowery, Assistant to the City Manager. I have the privilege of working in the City Manager's office and in the office of the city council, and it is a great honor to give the staff report today, given the significant meaning this park represents to our city and to the very special civic-minded, selfless person behind the recommended name. At the request of Councilmember Matt Ron, it is proposed that Margarita Community Park be renamed as the Michael, Mike Nigar Community Park. This historic and notable consideration also has the unanimous support of the Temecula Community Services Commission. Councilmember Mike Nigar is retiring this year and has served the city for over twenty-three continuous years of utmost importance, has been his strong, enduring, and endearing, and to his credit, unyielding leadership advocating the inclusion of our special needs population. After learning of his son's autism diagnosis in two thousand eight, Councilmember Nigar was thrust into a new world where he clearly used his newfound strength and his platform on city council. To be more than a spokesperson, he walked his talk, so to speak, to represent thousands of individuals and families grappling in an environment they shared that was not conducive, as conducive then as it is today, thanks to his work to raise awareness, to ensure the needs of all individuals and families within our city and region are including, are included. Speaking for those on the autism spectrum, Down Syndrome, cerebral palsy, any physical development hardships. Councilmember Nigar has been a champion of inclusion accomplishments that are now integrated throughout Temecula and stretch all areas of recreation, education, workforce, facilities, parks, and community engagement. The result of his work, by all means, also had the full support of every council member every step of the way, and as well documented in a report entitled State of an Inclusive City, drafted by our Human Services Division in January of this year. Its executive summary was attached to my staff report today and lists countless programs, events, and city amenities that are now equitably considered and include our special needs population and their families. In two thousand fifteen, Eagle Soar Playground and Splash Pad was constructed within the Margarita Community Park. It will keep that name, Eagle Soar. Councilmember Mike Nigar led the vision, the purpose, and the architecture of Eagle Soar to serve as an inclusive and accessible special needs playground and splash pad. Notably, not so much as supporting our children's disabilities, but supporting their abilities so they can soar. And Councilmember Nigar said at the opening of Eagle Soar five years ago, eagles, eagle wings tell our children to soar. We have a quick seventy-two second flashback of that park opening.
In conclusion, let me tell you, this is more than a playground. We have lots of playgrounds. This represents a little bit more. This represents a community coming together, telling all of our children... that under adversity, we expect great things from you, that we're not willing to accept the fact that you have some condition or what we call a special need or a disability. We expect you to overcome that, and we're here to stand beside you to do so, not only you, but with your family. And we expect you to do great things. We expect you to have great ideas, and we expect you to soar just like the eagle soars and have your strength renewed with the help of this community. So I conclude with this. Those eagle, eagles' wings, mount up. Tell your children, get ready to soar, because that's what we expect here with this playground. God bless you all and thank you for your prayers.
So, it is additionally proposed, um, that the public pool planned at the future Margarita Recreation Center adjacent to the Eagle Sore Playground, within the newly renamed Mike, Michael, Mike Nigar Community Park be named Liam's Place, after Councilmember Mike Nigar's son, Li- Liam Nigar, who has been the inspiration to Mr. Nigar's strong advocacy in support of the special needs community, as you can see from this article published in April two thousand nine. Uh, the pool will be heated with warm, uh, water and include a handicap ramp, making it easy, quick, and inclusive to enter and exit. The warm water will make aquatic classes accessible and comfortable for individuals affected by cold water, and the pool area will include family restrooms with showers so that caregivers can easily assist. Um, so with that, um, in some, um, the Mike, Michael, Mike Nigar Community Park, um, is a safe haven, a respite, and a breath of fresh air for families, uh, with children who have special needs, thanks to his work. Uh, and I turn this over to Kevin Hawkins, our Director of Community Services, who oversees all forty-one-plus parks, um, recreation, amenities, arts, events, and more. And importantly, the Division of Human Services that has implemented the inclusionary needs throughout Temecula, uh, in case, Kevin, you have add, uh, comments to add here.
I will add that Hawks also soar, but go ahead.
That's, see, that was, uh, too much of a buildup. Um, but, but I think you, you really nailed it. You know, I just wanted to add, just from a departmental level, and as mentioned, you know, the process was initiated at the Community Services Commission level. However, it started way before then with Mike's huge support of Parks, Recreation, Community, and Human Services, and his advocacy, as you shared, of the Splash Pad and special needs community, and resulting in an aspirational concept which became the award-winning Eagle Sore Playground and all the subsequent activities there, which has really activated the park. You know, I, I might add also that we're hearing from our rangers and residents and seeing firsthand the enhanced, family-friendly environment and energy created at the park. And that's where we see summer meal programs and volunteer and intern opportunities for our youth, seniors, and special needs populations, partnerships with TES in the district, and intense daily pickleball play, and all intensive, you know, and all in anticipation of a new community center with an intergenerational focus that says family first, that says Mike and Liam, and we're certainly appreciate and welcome tonight's recommended action, and we support it wholeheartedly. Thanks, Betsy.
Sure. So this concludes staff report. Um, with that, pass the platform, uh, to Councilmember Matt Ron, who has brought this recommendation forward for council consideration.
Thank you. Um, I, 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 I know we haven't, we're not voting on this, uh, just yet, and, and I, but I wanted to say before we do that although my name is on the recommendation, I know that, uh, this is something that we all, uh, carry forward, right? I mean, I know Mary Ann, um, we had talked about sort of the, basically the same concepts and things. So, so, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm honored to have my name associated with it, but, but I know that it's something that, that we all, uh, you know, truly believe in. Mike's, um, commitment to the community and his, uh, his heart, um, really changed our city and, you know, even, you know, at a, at a statewide or even national level became an inspiration for other communities to do the same with their special needs, uh, community. Uh, and it's not just, just that. I mean, he's left a, an indelible mark on, on Temecula in, in so many different ways. Um, and so I can't think of a better way to, to have, um, have him be, be, you know, recognized, uh, in, in his family, um, for all that, uh, they've contributed to over the so, so many years. I mean, you know, and I, and I say his family too, because, you know, they're, they're giving him to us, you know, and to the city for all of that time and all of that work. And, uh, you know, it's, uh, you know, they, we all make these, uh, these sacrifices to be a part of it, and his family certainly has as well. And so, uh, I can't think of a better way to, to recognize, uh, him and his son and his, his family for, for that, uh, for that contribution to our, to our fine, fine city. Um, and so I'm looking forward to passing this. And then, you know, as we wind down the year and move into, uh, an era that's, uh, that's without Mike on the city council, we'll have an opportunity to really, uh, have a, a, a much deeper conversation and, uh, recognition of his service, uh, in a more formal way. But tonight, uh, it's very meaningful for me and, and I know, uh, you all as well to, uh, move this item forward.
Zach?
Yeah. So thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Yeah, I, and to your point, Matt, I wholeheartedly support this, um, you bringing this forward and, and really collectively bringing this forward. That's, um, it's something, I, I was gonna save this for, for, um, for Mike's going away, but I think I'll share this brief little story now. And, you know, it was, um, we've been in the valley, we've been in Temecula for twenty years, and, and, uh, our family's first interaction with Mike was, uh, he was just driving through our neighborhood and, um, and spotted my daughter, a very young daughter riding her bike, and my wife riding with her, and he pulls alongside and, and, uh, and just asked them how they were doing, right? Like, here, here's, here's a council member of the city, um, just, is everything okay? How are you? And that really, that really struck a chord with us and, and, and really spoke to Mike's heart and, and how he genuinely cared about the community and, and the things that he gives back. And, um, and then, uh, just, you know, seeing the dedication over the years to the city and, and just the, and elevating that inclusion, um, just within our lexicon, well, now we're talking about this and it's just normal now. It's just, this is just part of who we are. Um, so I couldn't as well think of a better way to, uh, to honor Mike and his family and, and Liam as well. And, and Mike's, uh, story about Liam getting excited, just, I mean, it gave me a little bit of chills and, and that's, that's pretty sweet. So, um, yeah, I, I'm in full support of this as well.
Thank you, Zach. You know, I've known Mike for, well, forever. Um, and in fact, he beat me in our first bid for election for city council, and I think that was nineteen ninety-nine. And, you know, how fitting that I'm here, that I get to be here today to honor him in this way. Uh, you know, he has done so much, and you think parks and playgrounds and, and things like that. But in addition to that, um, you know, he helped to garner the support of local businesses, restaurants, who are now offering special hours or special, more secluded places within their restaurant, so that special needs families can go in and be a little bit more quiet, um, you know, for, for children who don't respond well to noise and things like that. And the same thing for our theaters. Um, and just in so many areas, so many things like that. And I know that, you know, we now have sports leagues that are very, um, active, that, that, um, support special needs, uh, kids, and everybody gets to play, and it's, it's wonderful. So, um, you know, with that having been said, I will accept a motion in a second.
Um, Mayor Pro Tem, we do have.
Comments. Oh, yeah. Sorry. I'm so anxious to get this. So we do have public comments.
We do. We have two public comments.
Okay.
The first public comment is from, um, Leana Masinani, and she writes, "This is the community park by my house, and I will voice my reasons why the park should not be named after Mike quote socialism and liberals suck end quote Nigar Park, not even a little. I request this to speak at this meeting." The next speaker is Martha Howard. "I am respectfully opposed to change the Margarita Community Park to Michael Nigar Community Park, simply because Councilmember Nigar does not embrace the residents as one community. Councilmember Nigar consistently submitted divisive and biased resolutions for council approval, putting our city on a national racist spectrum. There is no place for any city landmark showcasing the name of those who caused division. Shame on whoever supports this idea. The Margarita Community Park must remain, name must remain unchanged. So in the future, the Margarita Recreational Center, along with the park, will become arts and cultural centers for our diverse populations." Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Edwards, that concludes public comments.
All right. Thank you. And now I will accept a motion.
I will move approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. So can we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
And we will note that Councilmember Nigar abstained.
All right. So, yay, good job, everyone. Um, we can look for signage to go up. And I think, you know, a lot of times, uh, I know Ron Roberts, a wonderful friend who passed away, council member, I know he said that when he drove by the library and saw his name on the library, it suddenly became real. And, um, it was very moving. And so I think the same thing's gonna be true for Mike and his family as well. So, you know, he knows it, loves it, and appreciates it. But then when you see that sign, I think, you know, that really, um, you know, puts the rainbow over the package. So, um, thank you guys very much. Okay, we're gonna go on to commission reports and in no, you know, in no, um, usual order. And so Eric, you were the first one to punch in with your actual face on the screen. So Eric Levine, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, council members and staff, uh, colleagues. Uh, tomorrow is Veterans Day, and, uh, we do have a celebration and concert. And so you may want to deck yourself out in red, white, and blue and start the day with a real-life Veterans Day flyover at ten AM. It's going to start at Rancho California Road in Jefferson and travel north over Jefferson toward Calmia Street in Marietta. I want to say a special thank you to our friends at the City of Marietta Community Services for including us in the flyover and honoring all veterans, no matter what town you live in. At eleven AM, check out around and about Temecula's newest park adventure. Where else? Veterans Park. And at six PM, join us for our Veterans Day concert premiere, highlighting the Military Banner Program, Honor a Veteran Paver Campaign, and a concert from the American Patriot Band. To our veterans, we thank you for your service. This concludes my report, and I'll take any questions.
Okay. Any questions? I actually have one. So Eric, how do you do a flyover that starts at Rancho California Road?
Very carefully.
Yeah.
I understand it's, it's one of the, uh, the larger, I think, I want to say C one thirty, don't quote me on this.
Yeah.
But I think that's sort of the, the low end of the city limit, and that's where it's gonna start and, uh, and then fly down the route, Jefferson.
Oh, it's going down Jefferson? Okay. And what time is that gonna, because my husband's gonna wanna go, so.
Ten AM.
Ten AM, okay.
Yeah, Rancho, Rancho and Jefferson. It travels north over Jefferson toward Calmia.
Oh, that's pretty, that's pretty.
It's, it's another one of our joint, uh, collabs with Marietta.
Now, that's great. Okay, so, um, Brad, I see you punch in.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm good. How are you doing?
Good.
Good. Um, first, congratulations to Mike and Liam Nigar. I think that's wonderful, well-deserved, well-earned, and, uh, I, I think a lot of people enjoy that community center and park pool. Um, the only news we have from traffic and safety is that we've consolidated our meetings for November and December to December fifth, and that's all I have to report at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. And Linay?
Hi.
Good evening.
Glad to be here tonight. And first of all, I want to thank Lynn. Um, I've been able to work with her really closely as we've, um, she's been kind of acting as a secretary for community development. So with all the, our Zoom meetings since March, um, and being Chair of the Commission, Planning Commission this year, has been fun. So it's been great to work with her, and she's super efficient. And I know, um, Luke especially will miss her, and we're just grateful for all the work she's done. And then I also want to congratulate Mike. What a great idea. That's awesome to be able to honor him in that way. Uh, he has done so much for the city. And I've, I personally watched him learn and grow in this, um, council position, and I'm really amazed at how he can, um, not only does he put his family first, um, and families in the community, but I think he really, uh, is great on the council and how he can see things and ask good questions and, um, be able to see everyone's perspective. So we will really miss him as a council member. And, um, anyway, grateful for him and his, um, example to me. So we have been busy with planning commission. Our last meeting on November fourth, we voted, actually, both of our meetings that we had, the last meeting on November fourth, we voted on a, on a development in Harveston, which is twenty-seven thousand square feet, and it's a three-story building that's comprised of a congregant care facility, retail, and restaurant use. And this is actually on the southwest corner of Village Road and Landings Road. And I think it's gonna be a, a great development there in Harveston and just kind of fits right in. And we made sure that there's gonna be bike racks, Zach.
Yeah.
So you know, um, I asked that question. And then, um, we had a special meeting actually yesterday, also regarding Harveston with their specific plan. And so we voted on a residential overlay for planning area number twelve. That is actually across the street from Harveston and won't actually have the Harveston name on it, but, um, it is part of the Harveston specific plan. So that was kind of a big deal. And, um, we were glad to vote on that. And so we've been busy, planning, um, community development's been very busy. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, as always.
See you guys soon.
See you later. Okay, we have a public safety report from our fire captain.
Yes, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, council and staff. Like to congratulate, uh, Mike Nigar and his family. Uh, it's a special honor and, uh, like to thank him for his support for public safety and, and the first responders and in the city of Temecula. Also, I'd like to put a special thank you out to our veterans for their service and, and sacrifice, uh, so we can live in the land of the free and the home of the brave. Uh, your local firefighters in the city of Temecula for October two thousand and twenty ran seven hundred and forty-seven calls. Five hundred and forty-one of those were medical-related, sixty-five traffic collisions, and sixteen fires. And on, uh, the fire prevention side for our plan reviews, we had three hundred and twenty plan reviews, two hundred and forty-two construction inspections, and four hundred and eighty annual inspections in the city. This year with COVID, we're doing a little bit, something, uh, different for Spark of Love. You could go to, uh, the email or the website that you see on the screen, uh, for information. We'll be updating that. We are accepting fire, uh, toys at our fire stations, uh, but we are following COVID nineteen compliant, uh, protocols. And then we're also planning on taking toys at City Hall at the, uh, conference center. Uh, and that'll be during normal business hours, and you could find all that information on the website as well. That concludes my report. Uh, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone? Nope. Then let's move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Just one really brief, uh, item I wanted to, uh, make aware. Jonathan, do you have a slide I could speak to? Um, today- Um, today, uh, we had a very low-key groundbreaking ceremony. I was joined by councilmembers Nigar, or Councilmember Schwenk, and Councilmembers Ron, and, of course, city staff. But this project has been one that, um, originally we thought might happen, you know, in like two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
Yep.
Um, little thing called a recession, uh, sort of set it back and plans back, but it didn't deter them, it didn't deter us from courting them and, and pushing them. And this is one of the great economic development stories where you, you land an upscale, um, car dealership like Lexus and, uh, to join the auto mall family. So today, we, uh, we went out there and we threw a little bit of dirt, um, with the Lexus corporate folks and Toyota folks. And so, uh, we'll be issuing a formal press release later in the week, but I just wanted to, and I said this earlier when I was out there on site, uh, thank them for their trust in us, thank them for their investment in our community. Uh, we, of course, will benefit from this type of development through sales tax and through jobs, but it's a perfect and logical fit, and we welcome them into the Temecula business community. So, uh, a good day for, for all of us here, and, uh, and they hope to be open and selling cars by the end of two thousand twenty-one. So, uh, stay tuned. Thank you.
So in Temecula, even throwing dirt is a good thing.
Throwing dirt for economic development projects. Anyone that takes on opening a new business in a global pandemic, you've gotta tip your hat to them and, and thank them, uh, for continuing to stick by their investments, so.
I agree. So thank you, Aaron. Peter, anything?
I have nothing more tonight, um, Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
All right. Well, this has been a, a very, um, I don't wanna say emotional, but, you know, a, a, a meeting that tugs at the heartstrings. We've got, uh, you know, we're gonna remember our veterans. Um, you know, we had Lynn, and now we're planning on, uh, you know, Mike retiring. So, um, you know, um, if I, you will indulge me, I would like to, um, adjourn in the name of U- United States veterans, military veterans, and that would include my grandfather Clifford Combs, who served in World War One, my father George Thomas Place, who served in World War Two, my brother Jerry Place, who served in Vietnam. In fact, he retired from the Marine Corps as a warrant officer. Um, and my husband, Thomas Warren Edwards, who, um, flew on B fifty-twos during the Vietnam War out of Guam. So in, in honor of my family and all the tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of veterans who are serving, continue to serve, and who have served, um, you know, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move adjournment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and we stand adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.